I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Chisel?
Here.
Bell Richard?
Here.
Carlson?
He was here.
Was he? Where'd he go?
He's on recess. He's on his way.
Just say here. Loose?
Here.
Loose?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Rustad?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Moved by Bell Richard and seconded by Carlson. Roll call.
Well, Mayor, maybe it's just a formality, but regarding our next council meeting would be on July 5th, which would be on a Tuesday. Should that be on our agenda? Or does...or am I not?
No, you're correct, but that doesn't need to be on your agenda.
Okay, we don't, we don't need to have that.
Well, we can remind people at the end of the meeting.
Since it's 4th of July, it will fall on the first Monday, so the next meeting will be on a Tuesday.
So, we ready? Roll call.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Loose?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Okay, consent. And the agenda has been approved. Do we have any public comment on an issue that's not on the agenda? Anyone want to address the console? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed with the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the June 6th meeting, includes the claims, and Item C is Resolution 2735 amending 2080 agreement between the City of DeCorah and Winship County for dispatch services. Item D is Consider Approval of Iowa Retail Cigarette Tobacco Permits. It's about 10 different establishments in town. Item E is Partial Pay Number One as the 2016 Sweet Parkway Road Improvement Rides Grant in the amount of $3,660.83. Item F is Change Order Number Two Airport Three Stall Hanger Project in the amount of, actually a deduct of $2,172.17. Item G is Partial Pay Number Five Airport Three Stall Hanger Project in the amount of Item H is Partial Pay Number Six Airport Three Stall Hanger Project Release or Retention in the amount of $10,006.90. Item I is Resolution Number 2739, a resolution of acceptance of the Airport Three Stall Hanger Project receipt of engineer's statement of completion. Item J is Resolution Number 2740, setting a public hearing on vacation right away and subsequent conveyance of property. Item K is Partial Pay Number Four Waste Water Treatment Plant Emergency Generator Project in the amount of $4,750. Item L is Partial Pay Number Five Waste Water Treatment Plant Emergency Generator Project Release Retention in the amount of $4,709.11. Item M is Resolution 2741, a resolution accepting the Waste Water Treatment Plant Emergency Generator Project and receipt of the engineer's statement of completion. And finally, Item N is Resolution 2742, a resolution setting hearing on plans, specs, and form of contract and estimate the total cost of Pleasant Avenue Street Project and taking bids. Any questions about the consent agenda?
Item J, if we release that, then what's the status of the property? Is it just available?
No, it's, it's currently privately owned, and the question has arisen during a title opinion search by the current seller who's trying to sell the property. There was a plat of survey recorded and approved by the city in circa 1996, 97. It had a notation on it that that parcel would be deeded or dedicated to the city. We have no record that that dedication or conveyance was actually completed, but because there's that notation on the plat, the attorney completing the abstract or title opinion has noted that encumbrance and feels the best way to release that is to have the city basically convey, vacate and convey, just to clear up that, that issue on the title opinion. But we're not able to find any record that it's in city ownership. It does have easements, utility easements across the property. Those would continue to remain. So this is, is really kind of a legal matter to release any encumbrances that a title opinion attorney feels is on the land.
Thank you.
It still remains in private ownership.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
There's one correction I would note, Mayor. Item N was added later in the day on Thursday after the agenda had gone out. That should actually be Resolution Number 2743. Resolution 2742 is later on the agenda, so those got out of sequence and misnumbered theirs. Moved, adopted, consent.
Okay, motion by Loose, supported.
Second.
By Carlson. Roll call.
Let's give you a date on that Resolution 24, or 2743 as well. July 14th would be the bid date. Public hearing would be July 18th at 5:45 for the public hearing on 2743.
Okay. You want to read that again, that resolution, and with that on there?
So Resolution 2743, a resolution setting hearing on plans and specifications, form of contract and estimated total cost of Pleasant Avenue Street Project and taking bids, with the bid date of July 14. Public hearing set for July 18.
Okay. So the consent agenda with those clarifications has had a motion of the second. Roll call.
Loose?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. We know we'll have a public hearing on amendment to the Urban Revitalization Plan for the College Drive Urban Revitalization District. For clarification, I'll have Chad explain that and see if there's any public comment.
So this is updating and amending the College Drive Urban Revitalization Plan, which was originally implemented in 2004, had a 10-year sunset on it, so expired in 2014. This action will amend and update that plan, keeps it the same, it just amends it to current TIF legislation, or urban revitalization legislation, and then restates the dates. And of course, the subsequent action or the reason for this implementation is because you, council had received an application for urban revitalization in this district. Without this action, you would not be authorized to do that because the current plan has expired. So this is the required public hearing and action to amend and restate the urban revitalization plan for the College Drive District.
With the 10-year limitation again?
Right.
Is any public comment on regard to this revitalization district? Any public comment?
No comments were received. City hall oral or written.
Okay. Seeing no public comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask the council to consider Resolution 2742 approving of the Urban Revitalization Plan on College Drive and Urban Revitalization District.
Do you have a sense of how much this was used previously in the 10 years that it was in effect?
I can think of one application in that time period, and that would be the dentist's office. Those with morbid concerns might know of others.
Don?
A.J. Petersburg.
Was that new, or was that?
No, that was new construction.
Both of them were new projects, I believe.
Does anyone have a sense originally why it was proposed in the first place? I mean, were there other properties that the city was looking to have redeveloped or remodeled?
Did we do any for the auto? Don? Did we do something for Don?
As I recall, it may have just been an extension of, you know, what we were doing for Water Street, what we were doing for the downtown business area. The folks on that end of town wanted the same opportunity, as I recall.
I guess my other question would just be, if there wasn't this one applicant, would we still want to move forward with the continuing of this zoning or this, I'm sorry, plan? Or is it just simply because this applicant came up, and so if you wanted to do it for that one, you should?
Well, I think what we're doing is we're setting forth that, you know, we want and we encourage any potential development on the West Side. This is just another tool that they can use and the city can use. Since we, when we acted, voted on this 2004, like say, A.J. Petersburg, you know, built a very nice building on that side of town, I believe. I kind of want, for some reason, I'm going to say Don's also utilized it, and then of course, the West Side Dental. You know, and there could be other, other future developments, you know, on that side. So I think this is just another positive tool that we're, we're telling people that, yes, we want to, we want and encourage development.
Well, then should we extend the same courtesy to downtown? Because I'm sure someone from downtown would probably want the same thing.
If theirs is up, if theirs is up too, I think, yeah, we should always encourage.
We have more than one district, don't we?
You have several, you have a couple dozen different districts around the community. You have a downtown district, but I'm not sure if, it starts at the extreme east end of Water Street, but I'm not sure how far west it goes. I don't know that it comes all the way into downtown. The western terminus may be more around John Street, perhaps.
But the district we're talking about stops at TG and to the bridge.
Right. No, it's across the bridge.
Across the bridge, yeah.
NJ Petersburg area, right.
But just the north part of College Drive, basically.
Right, yeah.
And then extended Fifth Avenue down to, doesn't go past where the dentist's office is.
No.
So, is there other question, or does someone make a motion for support here?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2742.
Okay, motion by Rustad, seconded by Lor. Any other questions? Roll call.
Rustad?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Loose?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, resolution approved. Discussion possible action on site plan for Dyke Road Luther College Athletics, new replacement of the athletic fields there. Some discussion, we've got some.
This, just by way of introduction, this is a site plan review for Luther College Athletic Fields, specifically baseball and softball diamond improvements. Information's coming around, it was in your packet as well. As is typical with non-residential development or redevelopment, goes through the site plan approval process. This application is being recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are very few changes to the existing site, and it really doesn't touch any major infrastructure. It's really building or vertical improvements, adding a press box to the baseball diamond, changing the seating, some of the pedestrian egress and walkway areas are the substantial changes.
Any questions about this? We have representative from Luther here to answer questions.
Moved to adopt the site plan.
Okay, motion by Loose for adoption.
Got it.
Seconded by Lor. Any concerns yet? Roll call.
Loose?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Consider Ordinance Number 1183, which is amending Chapter 13.20 regarding water rates. This is the third and final reading for that.
Moved to adopt.
Motion by Loose for adoption.
Second.
And seconded by?
Bell Richard.
Bell Richard. Any comments on that, from anyone? Roll call.
Loose?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Okay, that now is approved, final. Consider Ordinance 1184, amending Chapter 13.2 regarding the sewer rates, third and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Bell Richard?
Second.
And seconded by Loose. Again, any responses here? Roll call.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Loose?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Okay, that's final reading approved. Consider Ordinance 1185, amending Chapter 8.16 regarding collection, transportation of garbage and other refuse to a designated land, sanitary landfill for the city of DeCorah. Second reading for this ordinance. Moved by Loose?
Second.
Seconded by Carlson. Any comments? Roll call.
Loose?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Consider introduction and first reading of Ordinance 1186, approving requested rezoning of Lot 2 of 3 Highland Drive from R1 to R3. This would be the first reading, and I guess ask Chad to maybe explain a little bit where this might be and reasoning of the, of the change in the zoning regulation.
This request, application for rezoning, was recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission for rezoning residential area from R1 to R3, and it is defined as Lot 2 of Lot 3. It's approximately 13 acres on the south side of Highland Drive, currently owned by Steve and Linda Henning, and through the planning and zoning consideration, which they do recommend approval of the rezoning request to the city council. As the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item, obviously their first review was the city's comprehensive plan and looked at language in that document that talks about trying to establish affordable housing, trying to be more inviting for housing development. And so, the proposal brought forth going from R1 to R3 is to provide for smaller lots, a little bit tighter development, which would allow for more houses, hopefully at that affordable level. And so that was some of the reasoning for recommending the change from R1, which is our larger lots, right? So it's less dense than the R3. So if, following the comprehensive guideline of more housing is better than R3 seems to fit that. That area, the community, has a wide variety of zoning up in that area, so it's certainly consistent with the comprehensive plan and the, and the current land uses in that area. Today, it's, it's zoned R1, but it, it sits in ag or just underutilized land. And again, so the planning and zoning recommendation is to rezonate to R3.
Do you have any sense why it was zoned R1 to begin with and not R3?
No, and as I went through the comprehensive plan, I believe I'm correct in saying that it was zoned R1 even before the current update. Our current comprehensive plan is dated 2012. It was R1 even before that, in the, in the revision prior to that. No idea.
Chad, just one.
Yeah.
92, 93, the town plan, there was a discussion trying to find R3 areas, and this is an area that was left out, but it was, at that time, that long ago, there was a neighborhood that was just, it may be the R1 neighborhood. I don't know if that's still the same, but that was, there was some public comment.
So, and that's a good point. During the, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing. That's what they, they do in these situations. There were a few comments. I think I put the minutes in your background notes so you can see who attended and what comments they had. Most of the comments centered on what type of development it would be. You know, they didn't necessarily want to see large apartment facilities and those types of things. They want to stick to the, the single-family or by-attached situation. And the developer who's looking at this project, that is their plan, and again, they'd like to see affordable housing, smaller sustainable housing, but at the single-family level. I, I believe all of the adjoining landowners or members of the public that were there were otherwise in favor of the rezoning request.
How many units, how many potential units would it sustain?
Well, that'll be up to the developer as they work through. Now, we have subdivision codes and ordinances, and they'll have to adhere to those. Of course, the minimum lot sizes in R3 is somewhere around 8,000 square feet, so they'll need to adhere to those. But otherwise, I think it's still kind of undetermined what the full plan is from the developer, or potential developer, on what the final design of the subdivision would look like.
Is R3 the zoning that we had down along the levee and near the prairie ground that we had some turmoil over that being developed? And if this developer sold and someone else bought it and it was R3, they could change that whole by submitting a new plan.
You can, you could, you could build to whatever is allowed in R3.
And so...
And it is the same.
Apartments are allowed in an R3.
That's correct.
So it's just current, so that raises my question is, is our R3, do we need R3A, R3B? So that R3A is small lot, smaller lots, homes. R3B is apartment, you know what I'm saying? So that we're not stuck in a, oh, it's R3, so you can go from there to there, and that's a really wide range to get a smaller lot.
The Planning and Zoning Commission has looked at that over the last couple of years. There are some concerns and conditions that either by adding other classes, you could certainly look at adding other classes, but when you look at changing legislation in the current R3, you have to be careful that you don't create non-conforming situations.
Right.
And if you would change R3 today to deregulate apartment living, now you've got a bunch of apartment communities scattered around that would be non-conforming. So...
Or that would be reclassified to meet the...
Or you'd have to rezonate those to your new classification, R5 or R6, or whatever that case might be.
Right.
The commission did, like I said, did look at that pretty extensively over the last couple, three years, and ultimately decided they'd rather regulate it through the site plan or subdivision process than rezoning.
I'm a little leery of that. I think classifications, that'd be a much stronger way to know that this is what it's zoned for and that's what it will be. So, I would encourage the P and Z to look at it again, I guess. It sounded like people were in favor of rezoning if it was developed in a small-family home-type style, non-apartment style.
Right.
If that, if it was an apartment style, that may change people's opinions, I guess, that look at this currently, correct?
That's correct.
Is there any way you can change the zoning under certain circumstances, I guess? And if it, it doesn't happen, it falls back to R1, for instance? Like let's say this development ultimately doesn't go through, it's been rezoned to R3, and they changed their plans, and they want to do an apartment.
The only way you could do that is to go back and create another zoning district like Mr. Loose is talking about. But the problem that you would have if you did that is, is that you have an R3 that may encompass, for example, 10 square blocks, and if you're trying to create a zone just for apartments, you may have three apartments in that whole area. Well, if you now would zone them R3A, you've got spots, and that is, that's going to create some question about spot zoning. So it's a, it's a difficult way to handle it, and I think the P and Z has talked about that in the past, but you're right. If you zone it R3 and this developer doesn't develop it, somebody else buys it, as long as they comply with R3, they can, they can put up whatever they want.
Can I say so?
Yes.
This whole scenario was talked over with the Planning and Zoning Commission. The developer has no intention of putting in a trailer park or apartment buildings, and it's 13 acres, and the market around this town is flooded, with 400,000, $500,000 house in already, and they're going to market for $200,000, $250,000 house, and we might have some way in there. If it doesn't get changed to R3, I don't see anything happening on that land for a long time.
I don't think anyone's against the small houses. The, the concept is the R3 allows a wide range of activities. Is that aheim, is that an R3?
No, that's in hospital medical.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody want to put a motion on the floor here?
Will we adopt?
Okay, there's a motion by Loose for adoption of this ordinance.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Johnson. Are there any other concerns about this?
Mayor, there may be a question.
It's a question of...
Don't, don't say it.
Speaking heads apart. You can come up and give a little speech before that, I guess.
Was the minimum required for lot size for R1 versus R3? You said R3 was 8,000?
It's 12,000 or 15,000 square feet.
Biggest district we have.
Other questions? Roll call.
Loose?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. Now, we have a discussion of possible action on ordinance amending the ordinance, this, this code of ordinance of the city of DeCorah by adopting an ordinance creating a stormwater utility. I think Chad has had some meetings in regard to this and not very well attended.
Powerful attendance.
But again, probably some explanation to see if we should proceed here.
So, just a real brief background history. This is a topic that's been discussed and debated at council level for a couple of years now. Last academic year, 2014, 2015, the city did partner with the University of Iowa and the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities to review the matter of stormwater management and stormwater utilities within the community, identified several projects that could be good stormwater projects for our community, areas of concern, problem flooding areas, et cetera. And one of the recommendations from the student-led team last May, May of 15, was the implementation of a stormwater management plan and a stormwater utility. And so to that end, the utility committee met in the winter, spring of 2016, and directed staff to create or outline an ordinance enacting such legislation. And before you considered it, you'd also directed me to hold a couple of public input meetings, which I did, one on May 24 and one on June 9. They were not well-attended despite several attempts to generate public interest, but... But neither here nor there, I think during that year when the students studied it, they held several public input meetings that were very well-attended. And there was a lot of public input during that process. So, to that end, I have written stormwater management utility legislation before you. There are some things for you to discuss and decide, which is why this is before you just for review tonight and not an action item, so that you can work through those things and provide further direction or ask questions. So, with that, I'd ask if Andy has anything else to add?
Um, no. I mean, you and I did a great study and I think everyone who, I think, Steve was not here for that, Dan and Kurt, I believe, so the three of you were not here for that. But we did review it again in the utility meeting. And I think it's a no-brainer personally. As far as the pay scale that we discussed, I think it's a pretty minimal fee which will be attached to the water bill. I guess, does anyone else have any input regarding?
So, just to provide maybe a little bit of background on that, on that piece. There are several ways to implement a stormwater utility and the way that the students recommended, at least initially, and that the utility committee kind of concurred with is by zoning class or by use district. And that's how I have set this up in this draft. And that's in Exhibit A at the back of the document. So, the R1 through R5 residential districts would be at one rate. The C1, the C5, and the hospital, medical, commercial districts would be at another rate. And then the M1 to M3 industrial zone properties would be at a third-tier rate. I've provided some examples just by way of illustration so you can see some of the revenue projections. And that's on the very last page, but those are certainly up to council discretion as to the fees charged for each of those areas. Another way to do this is to base it on equivalent service units or actual impervious surface. But there would be a cost with implementing that fee structure because you have to actually calculate the impervious surface for each property within our community. And as you can imagine, just that sheer number of properties and that work would cost a professional engineer considerable amount of time to go through and do that work, which is why the student-led team recommended this zoned approach.
I also think it's important to point out that you found documentation that the city has been wanting to do something like this since 1981.
That's right.
And we still haven't done anything.
Right.
And we've also got some pretty sizable projects, as you say, that we already have an idea of where we can spend some of that.
Right.
So, the library retaining, I mean, one of those things.
So, a follow-up on Carlson's comment on, it'd take a long time to build up enough reserve to pay for a parking lot. To me, the information I've gotten, it's 250,000. Straighten that out. So, even if you got the stormwater utility, how are you going to get the money to, because it'll take, you go borrow against it?
For what project, Chad?
The parking lot. If we're, we're looking at using money from this to repair the parking lot of the library.
Of the library retaining wall?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know that, I'm not sure where you're getting that quarter million-dollar figure. I think the last time we talked with the city engineer, it was...
I had, I had some construction people...
More around 100,000 dollars.
Give me an idea and they said it'd be closer to 250. Okay, I, that's just their guess.
But you can bond against this. It's a, it's a utility. It's an enterprise fund, just like water and sewer. So, you do have the ability under state statute to bond against it.
For huge revenue, right?
Right.
Okay.
If you wish to do that.
Okay. But you also had figures at the town meeting, what could be generated in a year by utilities, didn't you?
Yeah, and that's on the very last page of this document here in illustration based on the numbers that I plugged in.
The other question I have that I've been asked, who's going to pay for the runoff of the parking lot that we rent?
It's assessed to the property owner.
So, over by the Elks there, anybody pay for that runoff?
The property owner would be assessed that cost.
Okay, but he don't have any water meter? I mean, we're still going to...
We would have to set him up administratively. We'd have to set him up with a stormwater utility account.
Okay. So, he'd play a fat fee, that fee, and he wouldn't be paying on a water meter, then?
No, he would not be paying. He'd have a utility account, but it would just be for stormwater.
Okay. So, you're saying that each property would, if, even if there wasn't a meter for water use or sewer, there would be an account set up for the stormwater utility?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Let's assume the property owner only owns that property. It may be a situation where a property owner owns several properties and they have them on one water bill or two water bills or something like that. So, but it's, let's, let's assume that a property owner owns a vacant parking lot and has no other meters, then we simply set up that account.
So, not using, just using an account and putting all R1 to R5 in the same classification, does an R1 and an R5 have a wide range discrepancy of the amount of roofline and impervious parking? So, I'm questioning whether R1 through R5 should all be the same.
They certainly could, because in your R3, as we just previously discussed, could have apartment complexes and those would be more impervious.
R2 is dual-family, two-family?
Up to four.
Duplexes.
Okay.
So, to me, that points to more classifications of zoning, so that the larger properties with the bigger roofs and the more parking lots are at a higher level, at least initially when we get it established. But we don't have those, so we won't get those.
Is there more discussion or do you want to study this before you put it on officially on the agenda next time?
I like the idea of starting it with the basic rate by classification, but then I think in the future, looking at using the impervious surface as a basis, if we're not going to have more classifications of zoning. So, that it's more based on impervious surface in the future. But to get it started, I'd say yes, get it on the agenda myself.
So, is that how far we're going tonight, just to make sure we get it on the agenda?
Right. Just need to make sure that this is what you want to see or there aren't any other questions or changes. I would ask council if on Section 11, credits, or even Section 10, rate appeal, if that process makes sense and you can understand the situations that would exist for somebody to ask for a credit based on certain work done on their property to retain or detain or control runoff?
Yes.
And then the appeal process, just would ask that you're okay with that process.
Makes sense to me.
Any other discussion before we move to the next agenda item?
So, are you ready for it to come as an ordinance?
Do we need to vote on that?
Good. I set it up as discussion, possible action.
Mr. Utility Committee Chair, do you want to?
Or I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion by Carlson to, to, yeah, proceed, proceed with the ordinance and seconded by Luce. Any other discussion at this point? Roll call.
Carlson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rustad?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Chisel?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. We're through with the major parts of the agenda. We're down to reports. City manager?
I did have one item that I included in your background packet regarding downtown dining experiences and sidewalk use, indoor parking space allocation for enhanced downtown dining experiences. And there is a memo in your packet that I shared with the Downtown Betterment Association last week. Just by way of quick review, as you know, at your last council meeting, Michael Bachman from T-Box was here talking about some of the changes that they'd like to see to enhance that dining experience. So, I took it one step further and visited with the Downtown Betterment Association on Wednesday of last week and have started to develop a little bit of research or some framework on this concept. Currently, the situation exists where store owners downtown can use the three feet in front of their establishment if their sidewalk's 10 feet wide. In this case, on Water Street, they are. But the current request, at least from T-Box, is to use five feet or more. But then also to continue to look at the idea of maybe taking out a parking space and setting up. I gave you a picture there, an example of how that might, that parking space might be developed into some enhanced dining. And talking through the discussion a little bit more with Rick on the legal side of things, if you want to offer more sidewalk space, you really need to change that code, your sidewalk code. There's no opportunity for variance or special use or anything like that. Need to change that code. So, that, take a few steps to do that. If you wanted to allow use of the parking space out front for that dining experience, similar to maybe some of the examples in the photos, then, then I recommend you establish some kind of policy or criteria so that you can define that ahead of any applications for, for use, so that you're not reacting to situations that you've developed a set of policies and guidelines that are proactive, that are fair and equitable to the community, that set a certain standard for time, for use, for size, et cetera. So, I just wanted to get that back to you after a little bit of conversation in the community, which by the way, is very positive on this, knowing that there are some things to work through and there are some questions that arise. So, I guess the only thing I would ask at this time is if this is something you want me to continue to explore and bring ideas back, or if you just forget it, we're not going to do it, kind of thing, so.
I'd like us to continue to explore these, these different options. I think this is the direction of our downtown is going to take, and so I do want the city to be proactive. And I have some reservations regarding, and I think Betterment does too, regarding the parking, taking away parking. And so, I'd like to also see the street committee also be a part of this discussion.
All right, I'll continue conversations. Any other thoughts or comments?
I would just say, I would probably be more in favor of taking parking versus extending use of the sidewalk. I just, I feel keeping those sidewalks more free for foot traffic and then utilizing the parking spaces is a better route, in my opinion. Obviously, there's more information to be looked at before deciding though. I'll give a third opinion. I think we should do the five feet and look at a party spots.
Both, right?
I think five feet's enough, enough room.
I think, I think this discussion, I've talked to Chad before about this. I think there, a discussion needs to be had, not only with the council, but also with the chamber and Betterment. And looking long-term, what we feel, that the whole group feels is the direction the Cora is going to take. And so, that's why I think in a sense of community discussion should be held. I would encourage the perspective of what the illustrations tended to utilize of a barrier for any table space, so that it's an enclosed type of arena rather than just a walk right in off the street, but you're, actually feel like you're in an extension of the restaurant, not just sitting down at a table like, like what's in front of the Co-op now, is just sitting down at a table. Or Java-Johns. If it's going to be a dining establishment that really pushes the use of it, it seems to me to have some kind of control mechanism. That's why Steve would also want that discussion regarding public safety, you know, regarding that, just, you know, because you're going to be right against the street and maybe possibly on the street. And so, yes, we'll have to have a, some type of barrier, safety barrier, so.
And I know there are cities that have done it successfully and some of them are quite attractive. And portable, seasonal.
Anything else, Chad?
Couple of things. Just a reminder of the Airport Commission's open house at the municipal airport Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00. The commission invites you to come out there and see what they've done over the last year. Several of you were out there last year, so they welcome you out there this year. One of the new features out there is that Gunderson has based their helicopter out there, at least on temporary basis or trial basis. So, you get an opportunity to kind of see what that's all about and talk to the commission about that. And a reminder, the city auction is tomorrow at 5:10, 5:05, 5, something strange. And then the last thing I have, which saddens me to read or let the council know, but Chopper Albert, our IT director that we share with the county, resigned his position today. And he did that at the Board of Supervisors meeting. I have a statement that I, I don't think he's here, that he would want me to read. He says, "I would like to inform the Board of Supervisors that I'm tendering my resignation effective today, Monday, June 20th, with my last day being Friday, July 1st. I'd like the board to know that when I accepted this position, I came with excitement and intention of providing the county with the best possible technology and service that I could. And I viewed this position as one I would enjoy until the day of my retirement. I poured my heart and soul into this position and spent countless hours away from my family to build an infrastructure that is second to none in the state of Iowa. Unfortunately, it has come increasingly obvious to me that my value and my contribution to the county has not been acknowledged or appreciated and never will be. Consistently, I have ever asked, all I've ever asked was to be treated fairly, based on the job I was performing and not on what someone else thought my compensation should have been regardless of the value my role provided to the county as a whole. I think each of us knows of a particular someone who has made it his personal endeavor to ensure I have not been valued based on my contribution. It saddens me tremendously to leave a position that I have built an incredible IT infrastructure for the city and the county to move forward with. I'm very proud of the work I've done for the city and the county and the relationships that I've cultivated during my time here, but I cannot work for an organization that fails to see the value I bring to the table." Again, so again, it's with sadness that I read that and announced that. I have had a conversation with the Board of Supervisors Chair today and we'll be meeting here in the next week to 10 days to chart a course of action in response to this, so that's all I have.
Chopper's really been a very benefit, outstanding benefit to, to our city, really.
He's done an amazing job supporting the city, the county, and the, and the MetroNet.
But I think we have supported him. I think the problem has come from the other side, at least the impression I get. Okay, other reports. You want to use the mic?
The Fels Park rerepair is still coming. We're trying to coordinate park events, traffic schedules in the weather. We haven't been very successful. We're still working on getting that entry out. It's just an update. It may still be a little bit, they're trying to get their work done on 52. And so, we're trying to be patient, but we're still working on trying to get back in here and get that taken care of.
Other reports? Quiet?
Maybe one other one, I guess. I can see Michael, I need, we are bringing in treatment plan on the sewer out there. We're almost done. We reached the trail, which is the tail end of things, if they're thinking on getting through trail. Hopefully, we can put that together again and getting close to wrapping that up and beginning to put things back to final shape.
Okay. Okay.
Just reminding everyone, this is the, basically the end of our fiscal year, so we'll be wrapping up all the financials here in the next few weeks. There'll be very little paid, only those few remaining things that we have to pay at the end of the month. As far as, as bills go, what was through the council tonight is basically what will be, for the most part, will be, be paid now through the end of this fiscal year. Probably won't have a lot for the next meeting since we're always trying to wrap up and won't have a lot for the next meeting, but anyway, that's, that's what this time of year brings, so just wanted to remind you of that.
Any other reports? None? Okay, we'll move to council members. Anything, Randy?
Not much, just starting the initial push to get the Nordic Fest out and setting up and Hotel Motel is working with them to get some additional marketing for the 50th, to really get a promotion out this year to bring more folks to town.
Good. Nothing further, Mayor? Okay, there. Mr. Luce?
Properties had some conversations with both the Fair Board and the school district and we're seeking to continue discussions.
Yeah, I wanted to mention, and I guess it was brought up the last time, NIM certification for council members and Mr. Luce got it, maybe you can give a little pitch for it. Wasn't difficult, was it?
Extremely undifficult when you use Sean's expertise and his perspective, and I'd recommend you not try and do the course yourself, but go and utilize Sean.
And Sean's certainly willing to work with you on that. Thing over here?
Still looking for, I'll give, looking for ideas on a date for the deer completion program in July after the 4th, where we can work out procedures and maybe a show and tell what, what the DNR is looking at, so let me know. Get her on follow-up on the fire truck, see where I, get some guidance and see where we go there. The other thing, following up on one of the things I'm very pleased with, and Lindsay alluded to it, just giving you a little background, it's a positive thing on contracting. Our general contractor, there's several things that I like what they did. They're going, one, be ahead of schedule, we're on time. And two, hopefully, there's no work change orders. And the other thing is, they, they thought about the people here in town, because they could have tore up the bike path, started there, what they started at the other end and worked towards bike paths, so the bike path shouldn't be disrupted as long as it would have been if they'd done it the other way. And so when that general contractor comes to town, I like to shake his hand and thank him for the taxpayers because I, I appreciate what, what I saw out there. And then they're pretty well going to be done this month, I believe. So that's all I have.
We're just going to have a street committee meeting after our next council meeting on Tuesday, July 5th. We'll have a street committee meeting immediately following.
Mr. Johnson?
We'll have a personnel committee meeting immediately following this meeting. We'll take a little two-minute break again. But I, I did have one thing I'd like to say, just about the earlier meeting this, this afternoon chaired by Chuck Lor. I feel, I feel that we were cut short and had to start this meeting a little quickly. And we have an issue of a fire truck that is a used truck being for sale from another community that would save the community up to maybe half a million or 600,000 dollars. Gary brought up some good points that Luther participated last time and the county participated last time, but I'm wondering to myself as I sit here, are we missing an opportunity by letting that one slip through our fingers by not acting maybe a little more quickly? That's, that's just my thoughts on that, on that matter.
Good. Thank you. Okay, just a reminder, the next meeting will be on July 5th because of the holidays. So we have a motion for adjournment, so moved. Meeting will be adjourned and followed up with...